Yes, this time.
At this time, I'd like to call the September 12th, 2022 meeting, regular meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. Welcome to everyone who is here this evening. I hope all who wanted to get in got in ahead of the rain. Everybody looks pretty dry, so I assume that's the case, but welcome. We're glad to have you all here this evening. The first item of business that we have is to approve tonight's agenda. If it be your pleasure, I will entertain a motion in that regard.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All in favor of approval of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it's four oh. At this time, I would ask that all who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we will move into public comments, and again, we'll restate that there will be a three-minute timer and that with 30 seconds to go, I will gavel once, just so that you don't have to be kind of watching the clock and distracting from your thoughts perhaps as you're, as you're speaking. And we will begin tonight with Cindy Hill.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share my opinions. In regard to Matt Cross's proposal, his amendment, I know that the opposition to it argues that it would result in the safety of children being jeopardized by families that are not open to a change of gender, and I would like to just say on the contrary. Parents that are aware of this issue in their child's lives would be able to provide support and help locate some good counseling for their children and and affirm what is true. And so many of us are people who come from Judeo-Christian families, and we would want, we would want to know that, and we would, we would want to affirm the truth of God's word, which says that God created man in His own image. In the image of God, He created him, male and female, He created them. And it goes on at the end of chapter two in Genesis to say that God saw all that He made, and behold, it was very good. And God would never do something so cruel as to put a man in a woman's body or a female in a man, in a male body. And God is a good God, and I think we just need to affirm that to our children. And there's so much false information around now, and Jesus said that Satan is the father of lies. He's a liar, and he has been since the beginning. And he said that I am the way, the truth and the life, and no one comes to the Father but through me. And we just need to focus our, our energy on informing our children of the truth, and I would hope we would have that opportunity and appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Brooke Garrison?
Hello, I'm here for public comment on the LEA Plan for in-person instruction and continuity of services. The CDC in July of 2020 said to not use their guidelines to keep schools closed in 2020, although Rockingham County still did. My kids could wrestle on a daily basis, and schools were still kept closed. They received $10.8 million to safely reopen schools and had not fully reopened. This money is allowed to be spent on academic, social, emotional, and mental needs. I had offered to apply for grants to help with academic comebacks because our school reported in January of 2021 that middle school and high school kids had a 30-plus percent increase in kids failing two or more classes. However, Oscar declined that help. Does that make sense? Um, they had money and grants too numerous to count. However, it was not realizing in success of our community. So how is this money being spent? They kept the schools closed. We were worried about COVID. We had $10.8 million, and nothing was spent on mitigation. You had some money on ventilation. I've been in facilities maintenance. Just adjust a few VFDs on fans. Not a big deal. Terry Wilt told me that there are laws to prevent schools from being closed again because I was very concerned in doing this. However, when our school is reopening, they are surveying us on our Wi-Fi capabilities at the school. So how is this $10.8 million being spent? Eight million of it is being spent on tablets. They're trying to introduce technology to data mine or collect information from our children. If you saw the May, mid-May meet, school board meeting, Amy Painter discussed at-risk kids and programs. And what we didn't realize is that all of our kids are at risk if we don't adopt the values that this school board or the majority of the school board is representing. And they're pushing. And so really, the majority of our community, because we don't share many of these values, are all considered at risk. There is a daily, there is an article in the local newspaper before June of 2021 that they were, the school board was considering taking kids away if parents push their biological gender. So if my kid said they were a furry, thought they were a cat, and I said no, they could take my kids away. All right. They talked about kids, if they, girls can go to practices without shirts on, and Oscar can see he's a coach of soccer games. They show up with bags and try and collect the uniforms of girls in soccer games so that they can launder them and change them on practice. All right. There's a lot of values that I don't believe that we want for our kids. And I think the long-term vision of the school is that they're evolving, that if we don't support their values, then our kids will be taken away. They will use this info from technology to accomplish that. So be on the lookout for surveys. Say no when they want to try and survey your kids. Cover the cameras. They're trying to data mine our kids, and don't let it happen. Thank you so much.
Sarah Horst. I did not miss you this time.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Sarah Hurst. I'm a former teacher of Rockingham County, just having resigned this year after 14 years of teaching in this county. This division is a great one to work for, but I want to shed some light on an area that could make our division an even better place for teachers. Teacher Advisory Council is a way for teachers to share anonymous concerns with the superintendent, and it is a system that is generally useless for teachers. The way that it is currently used is that each school has a teacher advisory council representative in their building. That person is responsible for collecting anonymous teacher concerns, and then they take those concerns to the building principal, who removes any concerns that pertain only to that building. And then the comments and concerns are shared, the remaining ones are shared with the superintendent, excuse me, who supplies a written response to each comment or concern, which is then shared with the school employees. This system sometimes works for situations for requests such as improved toilet paper. I share that it is generally useless for teachers for this reason. If there is a significant leadership problem in one of our schools, and teachers are sharing their concerns about it through teacher advisory council, these concerns never reach the ears of the superintendent who needs to be made aware. When teacher morale in a building is low due to a principal's leadership style, when teachers are micromanaged, or the principal does not teach their, or treat their teachers as professionals, there's a problem. And since it is hardly appropriate for a school to air their dirty laundry with the entire county through the teacher advisory council, then some other measure needs to be in place for teachers to share these serious concerns so that problems can be addressed. So here's what I'm suggesting. Twice a year, teachers should be given an anonymous survey to evaluate their building principal. This survey should be given at mid-year and at the end of the year, and should be uniform across the county. Principals should not get to select which questions they want answered and which they don't. The results are shared with the superintendent and with the teachers in the building. Problems that are noted in the survey should be addressed with an action plan between the principal and the superintendent. And then when the survey is given again at the end of the year, if the superintendent's, or I'm sorry, if improvement isn't shown, then disciplinary action takes place. And a principal is not permitted to continue in any leadership role, not even in central office, if survey results are not improving. It is best practice for leaders to get feedback from the people that they lead. However, it is not required. In this county, we have some principals that never give a survey, or they select questions that would not bring problems to light. I have been fortunate to never have to deal with those issues. I want to say that in case my former principals are I want to say that in case my former principals are listening. It's not you. But I know that other schools have not been so lucky. So I'm asking that the board look into this and start asking questions about the care and morale of teachers in each building. Rockingham County should be in the business of taking very good care of their teachers, and I think that's probably the heart of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Michael Stempel?
Michael Stempel, Broadway Virginia. Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for the opportunity to speak with you. Well, the Fourth Circuit of Appeals has made it clear that Title IX does indeed protect trans students from discrimination, and we should all be cheering, resounding hallelujah. So why would a member of the board be targeting trans kids with a policy? Well, there's one reason: political agenda. They're using targets to motivate the voter base. It's clear that this name change policy is to target trans kids. If you look at some of the arguments made, like religious arguments of, you know, why, you know, people believe something, a policy like this would need to be in place, or that trans kids are somehow out of the will of God. I'm going to read to you some letters to the editor from, in the, this is in, these are from local, from the daily news record during the time of segregation in response to Brown versus Board. This is, these are local people. "The states have certain rights under the Constitution, which their governors have no rights to surrender, which be taken from them by the bayonet as shown in By Little Rock." Of course, that's Little Rock, Arkansas, when President Eisenhower had to use federal troops to protect black children to go into the school because the white populace was, you know, up in arms against it. And anyway, and here's another, this is another letter to the editor from, and again, in response to Brown versus Board, a local person. I can send anybody links if they'd like. "Let's be fair and place the blame on the shoulders of the servile Supreme Court, which purely, for purely political reasons, seeks to change the law of nature and will of God." So you see similar, you see similar arguments to segregationists, to these, to our folks today when they're arguing against trans kids having equal rights to all of us. So I want to like to talk about a community which I'm a part of, which is recognized by who, not by who it excludes, but who it loves. Let me read to you from 1 John, chapter four, verse eight. It says, "Whoever does not love does not know God, because God is love." I also like to comment, I appreciate Genesis, chapter one, and the idea that male and female, He created them. That must make God non-binary then, because if He created them, male and female, that would make God non-binary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stempel. Next, we have Nancy Basset with RCEA.
Chairman Breeden, school board members, and Dr. Scheichel. As you know, I'm Nancy Basset, president of the Rockingham County Education Association, and I just wanted to take a moment to welcome you back for the new school year. But in addition to that, I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated the effort to include our teacher assistants in professional development that we had in August. It was very well done, and I'm hoping we can continue to have these events for our paraprofessionals again. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of you again this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basset. Holly Cave?
Hi, I'm Holly Cave. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I don't have a lot to say, but I have a lot of questions tonight. And I think that it's a good thing that public comment comes before the rest of the stuff in these meetings, because that way we can ask you. And like tonight, for example, I think the superintendent's coming with a recommendation for a family life education textbook committee. And so I have questions about, you know, how those committees are picked, who decides that, and what are the, I guess, criteria that they judge these textbooks on? How do they, do they read the whole textbook? I've noticed in the past that students were on those committees. So did those students read the textbook, you know, or are they given, are they assigned certain portions of it? Or how does that really work? Because this one in particular with Family Life was to add some stuff in about sex trafficking, which I would advocate for 100%. I think that's something that we need to be aware of in our community. I think it's something that's here, and we think that it's elsewhere, but it's not, especially with the I-81 corridor running through our area. So I think it's important, but I also think it's important that we have people on that committee that are like, okay, I see where we're adding in this stuff about sex trafficking, but are there other ideologies coming in with this textbook? And so just in the interest of transparency, it would be great if we could get that question answered. There's an action item tonight. I just wanted to point out, the last meeting, Ms. Lorr had asked about, you know, the policy, the driver's ed policy, so it sounds like, you know, that we offer behind the wheel. I think it could be fixed. And there was some back and forth, and, you know, Ms. Williams says, well, it won't be a VSBA policy, it'll go back to Rockingham County. And I don't think that there's anything wrong with that. Like, we elected you all because we trust that you to be able to write policies. And so every time there's a policy revision, what I'm seeing is, well, we're going to, you know, we're lining up with the VSBA. Well, why? Do they have the best interests of Rockingham County in mind? That would be my question. And I also noticed on the policy IIAC tonight, that's up as an information item, that there's a line that said it's the policy of the school board to provide channels of communication for fair procedure for citizens to follow in expressing and resolving concerns about instructional materials. And I noticed that citizens is being changed to parents and guardians. And while I think it's really important to recognize parents, a lot of parents in our community are terrified to say anything when things are being done wrong to their children, okay, because they get picked on by students, and unfortunately, it comes from some of the administration. And parents in our area, they don't want to say anything. So it takes someone like me out of the loop to be able to speak for them. And so I just wanted to let you all know that there are people watching, they're aware of these policy revisions and what's going on. Thank you so much.
Ms. Cave?
Ms. Cave? Would you, would you mind just pushing that bar to turn that mic off so when, because otherwise the people at home can't hear as well when that mic is also on? Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you to our speakers this evening. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts and perspectives with us. Next, we will move to highlights by board members, and I will begin with Mr. Falk. Thank you, sir. Ms. Lorr?
I had the opportunity to visit several schools in the last couple of weeks. And, oh, hey, yeah, we started school. Yay, welcome back to school. I see some students here. Do I see some students here? I see some little students here, too. Did we enjoy our first couple of weeks of school? Are we off to a great start? I hear lots of enthusiasm, and I hear some not-so-much enthusiasm. That sounds about right. So I think we're doing, not every, we're on the right track, it sounds like. So welcome back to school. I'm so excited to be there. I was able to get in some schools. I was at Folks Run. Things looked great there. The kids all look like they're super happy to be back, and they're little frogs on the ground so they can hop, the little pre-K kids can hop along the hallways. It's, they're just really great things happening in schools. And then I want to wish luck. One of the reasons I was at school is because we have Ag Science Fair national contests going on via Zoom in our schools, and we have two students participating. One is Audrey Garrison, and I want to wish her a whole lot of luck in her upcoming interview. And then also, Thomas Lorr had his interview today. So we'll wish him luck, too. And then we also only have two FFA students from the entire state who have done their proficiencies, and they will be having interviews next week. And I want to wish them luck, and that's actually Jackson Lorr and then Rachel Cron from MTC. So I want to wish them a whole lot of luck. And there's just lots of great, amazing things happening at our school, and I'm so happy we're all back. Thank you.
Mr. Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. I want to highlight tonight, I went to a few schools myself as the school year started off, and just had an opportunity to say hi to the principals and some of the staff that I was able to see. And before I left to go to Florida, I had an opportunity to stop by and visit at Peak View Elementary School. And I had a chance to go in the early childhood special education class, and that was really just blown away what these teachers are doing with these kids, kids ages two to five years old. And if you've, if you're a parent, you understand that age. Like, once you get out of that age, you're like, all right, thank you, Jesus, and we'll wait till I become a grandparent and send them home. But these people are dealing with kids from ages two to five, eight hours a day, in there, trying to get them prepared for kindergarten that have special needs. And I just want to commend and say job well done to those. And it's not only just happening at Peak View, if I'm correct. Maybe if you'll shed a little bit more light on this tonight, Dr. Scheichel, but I was just really impressed with going in there. I went to the, I think it was Fresh Starts or at Cub Run. The Fresh Starts or Strong Starts, there we go, sorry. And that was incredible as well last year, when I got a chance to walk in and see what they're doing in that class. But to go into this classroom where they have kids from ages two to five, I mean, they got to, do they still have diapers on, some of them? So, I mean, these, they have special needs, they got diapers on them, and these professionals, teachers are doing an incredible job. So job well done. Thank you to that. And Dr. Scheichel, if you wouldn't mind just kind of elaborating on what other schools we have doing that, and a little bit more about that program.
Thank you. Yeah, highlights, same thing, you know, visiting schools. I've had the chance so far to visit all the principals that are new to their buildings, and then a number of schools on the east side. The mood in the buildings is really great. So when it, you know, I talked to some students at Man of Video, it's funny, you know, there was a substitute in one of the classes, and so they were working on their Chromebooks, but two of the students that I had in a class last year, and a substituted there, immediately came over and just saying hi. And the staff, the administrators, you know, everyone's saying, it feels really good. It feels really good the way we have started the school year, you know? And so hopefully, that'll continue that way. It's a really good start. Again, we built some additional days in for teachers this time to, you know, collaborate and work with teachers from other schools. And so that's a really good piece, and that's for early childhood special ed, right? So just like with the regional program, so we don't have a program necessarily in every school, but what we do is we pool the resources so that you can have programs where students with high needs can, you know, be in a room where you really need the intensive support. And I think, you know, when you mentioned Strong Starts at Cub Run, so there are only a couple of those. And so we are, because you do need much more intensive support for students who can't function well in a regular classroom early in the school year. And so there are, you know, two, three staff members in there working with just a few students. But what that does long term is it really changes those kids' lives, right? And like I've said this before, when I went in the spring, the students weren't in there anymore, and the teacher immediately, when I walked in, said, let me give you a tour. And we walked through the building, and she said, here's the one student you saw, here's the other one you saw. They were just fully integrated, and early on in the school year, it wouldn't have worked that well. And so we have a number of places where, again, really intensive care is needed. And so sometimes, you know, kids are brought from other schools to achieve that. And so it's certainly one area that we're immensely proud of, because, again, it's that early work with students that sets them up for success long term. And so we'll see those kids be successful over the years. And I'm glad you got to visit both the ACSE program and also Strong Starts last year. I'm not sure if it's the first year at Peak View. I can give you the details of where they all are at. We shifted. So sometimes what we do is based on classroom space of one school, for example, Cub Run, you know, they're at more than 700 kids, right? So oftentimes, what we're going to do is look at schools where the staff is there already and where there's room, although Peak View is filling up quickly. They have 70 new students this year, which is just tremendous. They're filling up, too. And so then you shift the programs to where they're most, where they have the best chance of being successful. So with Strong Starts, that's still at Cub Run, and there's also one at Plains. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. I've been at this long enough that one of the key indicators for me of how smooth the start has been is if there are any phone calls or emails. And mine was silent this time, so I think that's a pretty good sign that things were off to a pretty good start. Usually, you get something about this bus stop or that bus stop, or so-and-so doesn't like this teacher or whatever. But this year was silent, so that was good news. A couple of weeks ago, I shared with you that my four-year-old grandson said that he wasn't going to school. And I asked him over the weekend, I said, how do you like school? And he said, a little bit. And I said, how long do you think it'll be before you like it a lot? And he said, a lot of years. So hopefully, it won't be that long. But thank you all for sharing those highlights. They are indeed special. We will move to action items, and the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. If it be your pleasure, I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes as presented and you have in your packet.
I move we accept the, approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lorr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 4-0. I guess I should have mentioned, and I'm sorry, Dr. McQuilkin's out of town. I mean, that, people see that she's not here, I guess I should explain where she is.
Out of town, you mean, she's in England.
Like out of country, yeah, like out of the country.
What a time to be in England.
Right, right. Bills and mileage?
You have the bills and mileage for August in your materials, and I recommend approval of those bills and mileage.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion in support? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, again. All those in support say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 4-0 as well. Field trips, Dr. Scheichel.
You have a number of field trips for your approval today. One is an approval of all VHSL field trip activities for the 2223 school year, which includes overnight trips due to regional and state contests. Broadway High School, FFA, the big e-competition, September 15 through 18, 16 students to Springfield, Massachusetts. And then FFA National Convention, October 25 through the 29th, 28 students to Indianapolis. The marching band and music clinics, March 10 through 15, 2023, 50 to 80 students to Orlando, Florida. East Rockingham, also FFA National Convention in Indianapolis with 12 students. And Music Department workshops, March 24 through the 28th, 56 students to Orlando, Florida. Spotswood High School, FFA, the big e-competition to Springfield, Massachusetts with four students, and National Convention to Indianapolis for 10 students. Elkton Middle School, again, FFA National Convention, eight students to Indianapolis, FFA. They have five FFA trips at Elkton Middle School. Horse judging contest, February 10 and 11, 15 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg. FFA livestock judging contest, February 23 through 25, 15 students to Virginia Tech in Blacksburg. FFA meets judging contest, March 3rd and 4th, eight students to Virginia Tech. And FFA State Convention, June 19 through 22, 15 students to Virginia Tech. So they're getting their field trip approvals out of the way early. I recommend approval of all those field trips as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for the recommendation. Do I hear a motion in support?
I move that we approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lorr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments regarding those field trips?
I just want to wish the kids going to Big E, I probably should have remembered that one. All the kids going to Big E, good luck, since I have a niece going, so. So let's all pretend like I did that earlier, okay? So good luck to those students who travel this weekend.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question about, noticing the dates for the National Convention, some students are attending from the 23rd to the 30th and others are attending from the 25th to the 29th.
Great question. And that has to do with the mode of transportation. So many of the schools are taking buses, as is usual, but then a few of the schools are actually taking a train from Stanton to Indianapolis, and that adds two days to the trip. Not that it really adds 48 hours, but, for example, the students don't get back until Sunday afternoon, whereas the students that are taking the bus are getting back that Saturday. So it's different transportation modes. And Mr. Fitzgerald's done an amazing job already, not only reserving an entire Amtrak train car that will be filled with RCPS students to go to Indianapolis, but he's also working on the proper outfits for people who are on the train. So thanks to Mr. Fitzgerald for organizing all that and for the hotels, of course, in Indianapolis. It's a big effort and a lot of students going, as they do every year, so, but that explains the difference.
Any other questions regarding field trips? Hearing none, please say, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 4-0 as well. Budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, Ms. Mast.
Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Scheikle, presented to you here this evening for your approval is a budget amendment. It is amending the food service budget for additional federal meal reimbursement that we receive through June 30 and for food expenditures.
I recommend approval of the budget amendment as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. And I will move for approval of that recommendation. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the budget amendment as presented by Ms. Mast, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Mast. Declaration of Surplus Property, Mark Kalinsky.
Of items of equipment for surplus and auctions starting this week.
And this will be an online auction?
It will be an online auction as we did past couple of years.
I do recommend to the declaration of surplus property as presented. Again, there are always really good items on that list. So if you need a karaoke machine, you can get it at the auction. If you need a treadmill, you can get it at the auction, or you may even be able to get popcorn machines. So get online and get some of these good things. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Have a recommendation for a declaration of surplus property and a nice sales pitch on that, on those items as well. Do I hear a motion in support of the superintendent's recommendation?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to declare the list of items as surplus property for an online public auction.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments?
I noticed that on the, on the surplus here, there's a lot of buses. Does that mean that we received that many buses this year to replace those old buses? Or have they been kind of hanging out and we've gotten a few and we're getting rid of those, or?
I would have to defer that to the Transportation Department, is Jeremy?
I do not believe that we bought this many, but what it shows you though is, so over the years, for a long time, you know, our bus fleet got older and older. We have amazing bus mechanics. And one of the reasons in Rockham County, we were able to use some of those older buses is that they keep them on the road much longer than in many other school divisions because they do such amazing work on them. And so we've added, we usually have five or so buses in the budget every year. We've been able to purchase a few more over the last few years, but they're not necessarily all from that year. But what it shows you is, so some of them are, you know, 1991 models up to 2000 models that were finally, again, getting to a point where our fleet is more modern. And you can see it if you, you know, drive by Spotswood High School, for example, as I did today, when school dismisses, you can tell that those buses that we saw a few years ago, still the stick shift buses where, you know, have to go fishing for your gear, now are replaced by nice new buses. And that's a good thing.
Speaking of those new buses, I've been an advocate for cameras on the buses. Will we be getting cameras on the buses moving forward?
I can tell you that it's something you've mentioned before, right? And so Transportation initially put together a pilot project where cameras were added. There is a difference in terms of what you can do with a new bus versus what you can do with one of the older buses. Every new bus that we purchase does come with a stop-arm camera. And some of the older ones, you'd have to replace the entire video system, so also the video system that, you know, films on the inside. It gets much more expensive. So one of the approaches, I guess, that was discussed years ago, and I was in a different position then, so I don't know all the ins and outs of the conversation. At that point, the approach was to look for an outside vendor that would put the stop-arm cameras on the buses. And then it's that outside vendor that would send a ticket to the person who, you know, ran that stop sign. That wasn't possible because of, again, that didn't meet the requirements of county ordinances and I believe even at the time, state law. State law does allow that now, so the state law has changed significantly. And the county ordinance still requires, I believe, that, so as tickets are issued, you know, it still requires, it would require our staff to still go to court. That's one of the holdups in the current setup, that if someone does run that sign and the bus driver turns them in, first we have to then prove that it was really that person driving the vehicle. And then the bus drivers would have to go to court all the time. And so it's, it's a more difficult process, you know, when you don't use an outside vendor. There have been conversations with the Commonwealth's Attorney, I believe. And again, at this point, it still requires that extra step. But I've talked to Jeremy Mason about this. And again, on the newer buses, the cameras are going on there, but it may be worth reconsidering, potentially, you know, a change to county ordinance to simply refer to the state law. We'd still have to work through that with law enforcement. There are advantages and disadvantages. So advantages would be anytime someone runs that stop-arm, it would then automatically take a picture and it goes to that vendor. And then that vendor can basically claim a small percentage of what the ticket is, and the rest is, again, done without some, our involvement as much. People will get their ticket, they can then, of course, appeal it and say, that wasn't me driving. But the downside is that it really creates a ticket every time. And that sounds crazy, but there are cases where even now, a bus driver may not say, hey, someone ran this stop-arm and to really prosecute that. And one example, for example, would be if a bus stops, you know, that camera engages right away. Bus stops on the right lane on 33, that arm comes out and someone's still going by, they'll be ticketed. Is that a safety hazard? Not on 33. There is never a case where a student comes from the other side of the road, right? So sometimes there's a judgment call, and so that would have to be a conversation, right? Is that, is that where we want to be, that in a case like that? Because then it is, it's a vendor that does this, so we would be out of the loop completely on that. And so that would be a question to address. But it's certainly, again, by state law, it is possible to do that. And so I think that's a conversation we can have, to what extent we may want to connect with the Board of Supervisors to talk about what that may require in the local ordinance, whether that's simply a reference to state law, whether the ordinance has to change. That's a conversation we can certainly start. But to, again, to your original question, when we buy new buses, Mr. Mason has said we do put stop-arm cameras on those.
Great, thank you. So, so just to, I'm sorry, did you?
No, I was just going to suggest that perhaps that we deal with the declaration of surplus property and then if we need to come back.
That's a good question.
Yeah, right. That's a good idea. Any other questions about the declaration of surplus? That's, that's okay. Any questions about surplus property?
I just want to add, the karaoke machine may or may not work, right? And its buyer gets what as is, but.
Yes, but they'll be available to review.
Yep.
But we've, the county's done a really good job of using them up in a lot of cases, I think. But it is a great, it's a fun auction. And if you need some tables, it's a great, it's a great place to get a table for a dollar. And my husband does not want me to look at it this year because there are so many great things for a dollar. So, okay, I'm sorry.
If, the last thing I'll say is if you decide you want to buy any of those buses, Mr. Cross, I'll help you drive them to your house.
I'm leaving my mic.
Right.
I know they do. I don't like to have.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor of the superintendent's recommendation and the motion to support it, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's 4-0 as well. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Family Life Education Textbook Resource Selection Committee, Dr. Shifflin.
Good evening, Chair Breeden, members of the board, Dr. Scheikle. Our health, high school health and physical education teachers would like to review and evaluate new textbooks and resources. This will primarily be a resource for our high school teachers to use in teaching our students how to recognize, respond to, and prevent human trafficking as part of the family life curriculum. In 2019, when we had completed a family life education textbook adoption, it was in November 2019, the human trafficking was not part of the standards at that time. So they're new, and our teachers would like to get this committee approved, to look at some resources that they can then use in the classrooms as they approach teaching human trafficking.
And I do recommend approval of the committee as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle, for the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion of support?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the Family Life Education Textbook and Resource Selection Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, could, could you explain how we, because we had this one of the people who spoke tonight during public comments? Could you explain how we create the committee?
Yes, sir. So when we decide that it's time for a new textbook, the curriculum's changed in this situation, or maybe this textbook is dated, the director supervisor, in this case, our coordinator of health and PE, is sort of in charge of getting that committee together. So Mr. Rice, Sheldon Rice, serves as our health and PE coordinator. And we try to first focus on teachers who will be teaching that curriculum. So if you look at this list, these are high school teachers. We try to get representatives from each high school. And then the supervisor, in this case Sheldon, he worked with me and trying to work with our principals to find parents to serve on that committee. And so that's basically our approach. So it's the supervisors of the curriculum working with the teachers who will use that curriculum in their classrooms, trying to get as many of them as we can to the table, and then trying to identify some parents who would also come to be a part of that to have conversations. So they'll look at whatever resources are there. Again, for this particular human trafficking, there's not a textbook, right? So we'll look at some resources that's been created by some other community service projects and look at them and evaluate them and determine which one would best meet our needs of trying to deliver that instruction in a meaningful way that's also appropriate for ninth and 10th graders.
Thank you. We often have students on these committees, but I noticed this one doesn't have a student.
It does not.
Is there?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that?
Because of the nature of this particular topic, when what's going to be shared, we want the adults to take a look first to see what's there, then we'll make a determination. It's a little more maybe a sensitive topic than looking at a world geography textbook.
Just looking at the list there, one of the things that I would like to see is that it's going to be for four high schools. So I'd like to see that, like, four parents that will at least represent on there. I know we have two on there, but it'd be cool if we could have four. I know there's a, there's a parent, I think she's still a parent, and she even has a sex trafficking, does a lot of sex trafficking awareness in the community. And I think maybe one of her children maybe still attends Rockham County, so that would be someone to be on there as well.
We may be looking at her material.
Okay. All right, all right, all right.
So, so that's what we have to be thoughtful of. But I appreciate that, Mr. Cross. We'd love to have more parents, and sometimes it's just hard to get them, right? And we also tried to identify parents who aren't affiliated with Rockham County Public Schools. So in some cases, Jen Nick is also a parent of a Rockham County Public School student, but she's also the assistant principal at Broadway. So we really try to target parents who really aren't affiliated with the school system so they can, you know, give their honest feedback in the selection process.
And neither of those two parents is affiliated with RCPS, correct?
Not to my knowledge, sure.
Other, other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 4-0. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Shifflin.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Breeden, school board members, and Dr. Scheikle. Thank you for letting me speak this evening regarding the policy that we're asking for your action on. And it is the policy IGAJ, the driver's education. We mentioned last meeting, I believe Mrs. Lohr did comment about making certain that I passed along to Mr. Rice that parents were very clear that this did not mean that we were going to offer behind the wheel at this time. And I did share that information. The most important thing here in the policy that has changed is the 90-minute presentation with parents and students in the course itself, which will be after school at the different high schools if you do pass this policy.
And I want to add to what Ms. Williams said, as a result of the question we had earlier, we do not automatically select VSBA policy when there is one. It all depends on what the subject matter is. So for example, VSBA, of course, every time the General Assembly finishes the legislative session, there are numerous policies that have to change as a result. And VSBA provides policies that meet those legal requirements. And so the effort to align where it makes sense with VSBA is based on the idea that in that case, then VSBA will, when you get a new policy from VSBA, you know, you don't have to do all that work again of revising just because there's a sentence missing, for example, right? And so where we can, we do use VSBA where it makes sense, based on, again, what the policy is about. But it's not automatic. We don't say, oh, let's just go with the VSBA policy. So for example, you know, later on, you'll see a policy about cell phone use in Rockham County, and that's purely a Rockham County policy. Sometimes that's because there is no VSBA policy, other times it is because there's a local desire to have a policy that fits our needs better. But again, there are hundreds of policies, and when VSBA, you know, brings one that is more about these administrative things and what has to be, for example, in a driver's ed class, then it does make sense. And so here, the decision, you know, in terms of leaving in the portion that could at some point become, you know, effective, if we were to offer behind the wheel, you know, it's easier to still go with VSBA. We don't offer the course, as we do with many other things, you know, it's, it only applies, of course, if that portion exists in Rockham County. It makes management of that policy easier, but there are many policies where we have our own version and we do talk in detail about which policies that makes sense with. about which policies that makes sense with. And I do recommend approval of the policy as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Do I hear a motion in support of the superintendent's recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lour. Any questions or comments?
The 90-minute portion for the parents, is that mandatory?
It is not mandatory. They do have to sign a form that indicates that they were given the option, though.
Okay. So it's just a parent's signature that's required for grade?
Correct.
But not the actual parent?
Correct.
Good. Thank you for that. And then while we're on this topic, I've got older students, like a December-born, and that child, I feel like the children who are older in their class, behind the wheel, or the classroom portion comes a little late. I'm wondering, can, can we as a division review how, the ages and the timing of the class to make sure that we're not putting kids behind? And that's really more of a question for Dr. Scheichl while we're on this. And again, I'm, I'm asking questions in the wrong spot. I apologize. But there it is.
Yeah, I will pass that on to Dr. Shiflett for his review as they change and review curriculum.
Yeah. I would, I would also say that one of the benefits of, of being aligned with the Virginia School Boards Association and their policy recommendations are that they are on the ground in Richmond, involved in the lobbying process, and are familiar with what, what's being proposed and how it will impact all 134 or so school divisions in the Commonwealth. So they have a good aerial view of what's, of what's going on out there and what's needed. I will say that there have been a time or two that we have contracted an outside source. I think the last time we did it, Dr. Kidd did it, to come back and take our policy manual and the VSPA policies and compare them just to see if they were really where Rockingham County needed to be. And, you know, my memory escapes me as to how long ago that was, but maybe we need to have that discussion again at some point.
So, because I think the valid that was, I mean, the question that was brought forward was a valid concern when it comes to the VSPA because sometimes they, they recommend things that don't fit and/or are just ridiculous. This would be blunt. And so I think it's a valid question that was brought up tonight, something to look into, and that we don't just follow VSP, VSPA all the time because they recommend something. But, you know, that's why the, our constituents voted us in.
Yeah.
And I, and then what, just to give an account, this is, what I'm bringing up is that I think it was right before I, this has nothing to do with you, Ms. Marcy Williams, I'm, but it was right before I got on the board, the VSPA recommended that you take all the, mess with all the pronouns in our policy. And so it was no longer the chairman, it's just a chair. And so it's policies like that that we pass that may not fit and just kind of silly to just go ahead and pass something just because VSPA recommends that. It's no law in Richmond that said we had to take out our pronouns or anything like that. It was a recommendation. We followed the recommendation. And I don't see a need why I can't call you the chairman or the chairwoman that views the chairman. So I'm Jackie, I'm Lour. But I'm, yeah, that's what, that's, I think, not just in question, because I don't, I didn't talk to Ms. Cave tonight because of that, but that would be a good example of just following the VSPA just because VSPA puts something out there.
I, I'm not aware of any instance in 22 years where we have adopted a policy simply because VSPA said to do it. So, all right. All those in favor of the policy revision, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we will move to information items, the MOU with RCPS and Rockham County Sheriff's Office. Dr. Scheichl.
Over the last five or six years, we have made a number of changes to our memorandum of understanding with the Rockham County Sheriff's Office. And two years ago, legislation, and some of this had to do with, for example, how we handle cases where the school division, for example, expects serious criminal conduct or that where there's the potential that something could be serious criminal conduct. It go, it went into detail as to, you know, which phone numbers we could call to immediately have investigators be involved in those investigations or take over the investigations. Again, when it comes to criminal conduct, oftentimes, you know, we stand down so that the first interview can be handled by the professionals in that field. And so two years ago, legislation in Richmond mandated that school divisions every two years review the MOU and try to align it, not word for word, of course, but to, in terms of what the topics are with the model MOU that exists. And so we went through that process over the last few months. I had sent the MOU, the original MOU, to Sheriff Hutchison, also to legal counsel along with the model MOU. And then legal counsel did an analysis of which provisions of the model MOU we already have in our MOU, because we tried to keep it fairly short. So the model MOU is much, much longer. And then as legal counsel suggested changes, we sent, and again, sheriff provided feedback. Sheriff Hutchison and I met to talk about the differences and where we would want to simply refer to state code or where we would want to really include new statements in our MOU. And part of the process also involves providing the draft MOU to the public for input and then for the board to vote on it. So in the past, this was simply an annual signature by Sheriff Hutchison and myself. And so this process has slightly changed. And so we do have the draft on MOU and some of the pieces in the model MOU, for example, that are more specifically addressed now, have to do, for example, with defining the difference, because this is sometimes an area where you quickly run into trouble, you know, what's the difference between events that the sheriff's department should handle and what's really a code of conduct violation? So, you know, if there's a fight in school, theoretically, everything, all of these behaviors could be criminalized, right? And handled by the sheriff's department, but that's certainly not, then neither by the sheriff nor by the school division. And so there has to be an understanding of where the SROs, for example, step in and where this is simply handled as a code of conduct violation. Other areas have to do with how investigations work, how the questioning of students is set up when students do need to be questioned, and how searches operate, arrests, and so on. And so you have the draft MOU that both the sheriff and legal counsel have approved, not in a formal vote, but the sheriff has said that this is the version that he is comfortable with. You have that in your materials, and we will post it to the Rockham County website tomorrow. And there will also be a feedback form for the public to comment. And then based on what the public comments are, we will, you know, look at whether any changes are still needed. Again, that would work with legal counsel and the sheriff's department. And then ultimately, also input from the board and then bring that for a vote. And so that's a process that we'll have to go through every few years. And then, you know, in the intervening years, it's simply a signature by the superintendent and the sheriff.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Next, we will move to policy revisions and additions. And I have on my sheet here, Dr. Scheichl, Mr. Cross, and Dr. Larry Shiflett. So I will, whoever goes first.
Would you like to go first or second, third? Okay.
I just want to say on the last, with the MOU with the sheriff's office, as Dr. Scheichl said, if parents are out there, please fill out the, the information form if you have any public comments about the MOU. Look at it. I mean, there's things that you go through, you may look at, may have questions on, maybe it's a great time to, to ask those questions and get that back to us so we can hear what you're saying as the public, as parents, because it's really important to hear back from you. As, as far as my policy, I am, I am going to present tonight. Let me give it out to you. Yeah, okay. And I'll, I'll read what I have in here. I took out from my original one, there were some concerns involving parents being the ultimate authority in a child's life. We can have our own conversations on that issue. There's also a part in there where people didn't like the wording, where it said if employees disregarded this policy, that they could be fired. So I took those things out because I think the most important issue on this is what, what I'm presenting here tonight. And that is that parents would be notified and have to give consent when their child wants to change their name at school. And that's the most important thing in this whole policy, is to partner with parents. And as school board members, we should be in the business of partnering with parents on, on everything that we do and not hiding at all or, or perceive to be hiding anything concerning their children while they're at school. And so I'm, this is what my policy says, this is why I'm presenting it. And, and this is, you know, ultimately what I want to present to the school board, that they, you can know as a public of where they stand on these issues. And they can be held accountable as well because as it's been reported in the news, there's, all of them didn't like it. Ms. Lour has stated that it would add too much paperwork. And Mr. Breeden and Falk, I think, both stated as well that they are not for this policy. And the only one that said that they would not answer that question from the DNR was Dr. McWilkin, and she said she would wait to hear from legal counsel. So they already had their minds made up before we even talked to legal counsel on this matter. And so I want to hold their feet to the fire as well of what exactly they're going to be voted on when they vote hopefully for, because we're in the business of partnering with parents and not hiding information from parents. So this is what my, my policy, name change policy says, is all employees or agents of Rockham County Public Schools will address a student by the name or names listed only in the student's official school records. That means Power School. So it's really easy. When you, when you, when you register your child, you can put, my son goes by Azakaya, he goes by Hesey, or you can call him Hes. I don't care what, those three names, those are what we call them at home. So put all those names in there. And when they, and when they look up the child's information on Power School, your information comes up on there. Your parent knows that. If you want to change any of those net, or change, put a new name up there, I don't care. What, what's your name may, what you want to change it to, as long as your parents, the student's parents or guardians are okay with that. If any student wishes to be called by any other name that does not reflect the student's official school records, a parent or guardian shall be notified by the school administrator, and consent must be given by a parent or guardian of any such name change. So it just gets down to the, the meat and potatoes of, of this student name change policy. And I was really shocked when, back in May, when I found out that we wasn't notifying parents. At that school board meeting, I was shocked that we wasn't partnering with parents there. And so I looked at the school board, at school board members on that night, and I said, as elected officials, school board members, we need to do something about this, and we need to have a policy in place where we're partnering with parents. That's, it's as simple and easy. And I'm sorry it's taken so long to get it to where it's, where it's at, but hopefully at the next school board meeting, the public can know where we all stand on that and hold us accountable for the way we vote. So, thank you.
All right. Dr. Scheichl or Dr. Shiflett?
Dr. Shiflett, do you want to go with yours?
Thank you, Chair Breeden, members of the board, Dr. Scheichl. I have two policies for information this evening to consider for action. I'll start with the first one, school year, school day. And these are both RCPS policies. So we use VSPA to kind of guide our thinking, but these are written sort of by us. And the first one, school year, school day. And basically what we're doing with that policy is taking out the half-day kindergarten. We do not offer a half-day kindergarten. It's not been part of our program. And so we're removing the language that would support that. And we're also, so making some adjustments where it talks about instead of grades, one to 12, it's K to 12. And also taking out the language about 140 clock hours. So we address clock hours and the, the alternative pass to accreditation in policy IKFD. So it really doesn't need to be here. And the state has given us some leniency on clock hours, which I would say is very much appreciated. Clock hours, I feel like I've always said, is measuring the wrong end of the student. Just to say, you sit in a chair for 140 hours, we give you a credit. It should be a little bit more based on the learning. So that is the policy ICID in regards to school year, school day. Any questions about that?
And when you talk about the clock hours, so those were the clock hours for an individual class, right? Just to clarify, this is not about the overall length of the school year?
No. We, we still are obligated by code to have 180 days or 990 hours. And we strive to get the 990 hours. But this was more of a breakdown for high school classes, that they had to get 140 hours of, with their seat in a chair, basically. And then the other policy, public complaint about curriculum or instruction, and IIAC. And I highlight, and I think one of the parents had a question about this, and maybe I'll try to explain the rationale here. So when you look at the original policy, it says public complaint. And then you read down and it says, therefore, the policy of the school board to provide channels of communication, a fair procedure for citizens. And then when you get to the actual procedure, the language in the, in the original policy changed, and it says, a parent or guardian of a student with whom specific instructional materials are being employed, who challenges the use of material in a school, should be given an explanation, so forth, so on. And so we were trying to get some clarity. Is it public comment for everyone, or is it for parents and guardians? So I feel like one way or the other, we need to be consistent and say, this is public comment for citizens, and it's also public comment, or is it for parents and guardians? And this is about instructional material. So these, this would be about a student bringing home, maybe the textbook, and a parent seeing it. Or maybe the student brings home a novel study, and the parents are looking at it, the guardians are looking at it and saying, hey, we've got a problem with this. So that's why that language was, was altered, to kind of build some consistency. Had a couple of parents last year call and say, this policy's a little confusing, because it says public, says citizens, then it says parent, guardians. What, which is it? So I think there needs to be some clarity there. And then the, the other main changes here really was just adding a timeline to this process. So when a book is challenged and it goes through the process, there wasn't a timeline. And so when a book came to the committee level at the school, there was no guidelines of how long they could take. When it came to the division level, there was no guidelines as to how long we should respond. So we plugged in some timelines there that we thought would be reasonable for, for schools to work within, you know, time to read a book and think about it and have some, some meetings about that. And then the last one was about, we did add some language about if a book makes it to this board, and you guys made a vote, let's say it's a 5-0 vote, that it would then remain in place until the board changes through the election process. So that way we just don't have, okay, you know, someone else coming with the book that you've already reviewed and voted on to stay on the shelf or what have you. It doesn't come back again six months later. So that was added for that part.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett.
I don't recommend, well, I guess we'll do mine, yeah. So the final policy tonight is a change to the Rockham County cell phone policy. And just for context, the policy that allowed students to use their personal electronic devices in the classroom was passed when students did not yet have their RCPS-issued Chromebooks or tablets. And at the time, it was, we referred to it as your bring-your-own-device policy. So students who were working on an online assignment, rather than having to wait for the computer lab to be available two weeks down the road, you know, they could do some of that research on their, on their phone or on, on another device. Some students had their own tablets with them. And of course, times, you know, have changed. Now every student does have a device. And I will also say that, you know, now that students have those devices, the policy that allows students to use their personal devices during class time has become a major distraction. We've seen it across the country. I sent an article about the impact of that to board members in the summer. And then we began a conversation here to potentially change that. A number of school divisions across the country, and, you know, many in Virginia have taken these steps. There are a number of different approaches that school divisions have taken. Some have simply banned personal electronic devices from school. So you can't have it with you, period. Others ask students, for example, to give them during, to the teacher during class time. Or at Montevideo, for example, there were these holders on the wall that students could basically place their devices into. And then some other school divisions, and that's the policy that we're proposing, allow the student to have possession of the device, but it has to be, for example, in the book bag. And so in order to get some public feedback about the policy, I sent out the survey a few weeks ago and then closed that August 31. And so the options that were provided for, and we asked, we sent this basically to the entire mailing list that we have for notifications, for announcements. And so people could indicate whether they are a parent or guardian, a teacher, a staff member, or a student, or some other option. And then two questions were asked, one about middle school, one about high school. And the options were, students should leave their cell phone at home. Students should be permitted to bring their cell phone to school, but leave it in their book bag during the day for middle school and during class time at the high school. And then third option was students should be permitted to have their cell phone out of the book bag, but should only be permitted to use it with teacher permission. And over those few weeks, and it, the responses came in rapidly. So within the first probably 10 hours, we had about 1,000 responses. It then slowed down, of course, as it always does. By August 31, we had collected 4,346 responses, which is pretty significant when we compare that to many of the other surveys that we've sent out in the past. 80% of the respondents indicated that they are a parent or guardian. 25% indicated that they are RCPS teacher or staff. So 1,082, which is approximately half the people who are on staff in RCPS. And then 5%, 205 students responded. I had some individual emails from students and I just pointed them to the survey. And so the results, when it comes to middle school, the students should have their, leaving their cell phone at home, received 10%. And many of the, we also offered comments to the respondents. And many of the comments there were, I do want my child to have their phone with them, but I understand it doesn't need to be out during class time. And that was the most common response to that. And so saying the cell phones should stay at home, received 10%. At the middle school, it received 3% at the high school. Not surprisingly, and I think that was clear from the very beginning, you know, that we weren't really proposing that. Then the other option, students should be permitted to have their cell phone out of the book bag, but should only be allowed to use it with teacher permission. So either during the school day or during class time, you know, at the high schools, 21% at the middle school, and then 35% at the high school. And the option of students being permitted to bring their cell phone to school, but leave it in their book bag during the school day, 63.7% of middle school respondents, parents, teachers, students, voted for that option. And of course, we said book bag because I think early on, and this was also borne out by the, many of the comments. People said, I do not want my child's cell phone to be on the teacher's desk or in a pocket. And I understand, you know, a number of reasons for that. Ultimately, you end up with, well, where's my phone now? My phone was taken, my phone was destroyed, you know, all these things. Keep it in your book bag during the day, but you can have it with you. And so at the middle school level, that was 63%, again, as opposed to 21% with teacher permission. So really three to, three to one. And then at the high school, the option of having the phone in the book bag during instructional time or during class time, 56.2%. And so in both cases, those in terms of you don't need this during class, or at the middle school, you don't need it during the day. High school is different. Students have jobs, they, they drive, they have, you know, different levels of communication needs. And certainly, of course, it will involve using their phone to be on social media during lunch. But again, for us, it's critical to say, but there's no need for it during class time. So it matches, you know, the, the policy that we had talked about potentially also matches very well with community preference. There were a couple of other comments. For example, some comments had to do with a student potentially needing their phone to check glucose levels, right? So there are some medical exceptions, and we addressed that in our proposed policy. And then many also said, hey, you know, don't just talk about phones, right? There are many other devices. So for example, even at the elementary level, we hear of students who wear their Fitbit. And apparently you can text to a Fitbit. Now you can't text back from the Fitbit, but we have a number of students who constantly get text messages on their Fitbit, right? So we're addressing all communication devices, including Bluetooth headphones. One of the most interesting responses I received from students via email, but also from parents and students in the, in the response was, please don't forget that when students who, for example, are diagnosed with ADHD, do independent work, they can actually benefit from listening to music. Now, I looked at, I looked at that in more detail, and there's some interesting research out there on that. And now what the research says is that there certainly can be a benefit to that. But the benefit is the greatest when you listen to classical music. So that doesn't mean students will only be able to listen to classical music, but it won't be necessarily their playlist, right? Because if it's during instructional time, there is lots of music that I spoke to IT, you know, what, what do we have blocked? You know, we, we don't have Spotify unblocked on the Chromebooks. And since the phones are going to be in a book bag, but YouTube has an enormous amount of music on there that, that certainly will be available to students. And I'm sure if a student needs to listen to a particular song, you know, I'm, I'm not going to tell students how they may be able to accomplish that, but I'm sure they'll figure that out. But it's got to be on the Chromebook. And it's got to be with wired headphones because if it's not with wired headphones, then again, we don't know what, what those AirPods or Bluetooth headphones really connect to. So the policy that is for your review basically states that student use of any personal electronic device, including but not limited to laptops, iPods, I don't know if anyone still uses iPods, iPads, cell phones, wireless headphones, smartwatches, and other devices that can be used to receive or transmit electronic information shall adhere to the following regulations. The past policy again referred to teachers giving permission, but we found that to be a battle that is just, again, not worth fighting for our teachers in the past, you know, because one teacher gives permission, then that becomes a battle in the next class. Middle school students may not use personally owned electronic devices during the school day. That was already the case, except for middle school students. It, you know, to what level it had to be concealed was a different question. Again, we're removing the teacher permission. Middle school students may use personally owned electronic devices after school, extracurricular activities on buses, and so on. So we want to protect instructional time. High school students may use personally owned electronic devices during the following non instructional time, during lunch, between classes, before and after school, including extracurricular events, and on buses, when student owned electronic devices are in use. Students shall use headphones, during those non instructional times, students shall use headphones or earbuds to keep audio from being disruptive. So you don't want to have 15 different headphones playing music out loud. And that was already in the old policy. And then during the time when use of the personally owned electronic device is not permitted, the device must be concealed in a separate container such as a book bag or purse and muted. Students may only use wired headphones to connect to RCPS issued electronic devices. Exceptions to this policy, for example, for medical reasons, must be approved by the principal on a case by case basis. So we certainly have that option if a student needs that phone for a glucose measuring that there's an exception. And then it just, the sanctions really have already been established previously. So whether that's device goes to the office and stays there for the day, a parent receives a phone call next time, a parent is asked to pick it up, and then it escalates to a loss of cell phone privileges, period. And so this is for your review. It is in public content, so the public certainly also has a chance to look at that in the school board materials. And it's for your review, and then we'll bring it for action at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Thank you to all who have presented policy revisions or additions. Board members, you do have in your packet a financial review and an attendance report for August of 2022 that you can, if you've not had an opportunity to look at, you can look at it at your leisure. And we will move to school board questions, and I'll begin this time with Mr. Cross.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Scheichel, for, um, creating that policy and also getting the feedback from all our teachers and parents in the community. As you said before, it's almost 5,000 responses that we got back for the cell phone policy. And although my children, or my, my son, I should say, my, cause my middle son, although he doesn't attend RCPS right now, he will be attending at Montevideo soon. He was not in favor of this policy, and they're mad at their dad for even bringing it up and wanting to be a part of it. I'm, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think it's the, it's what teachers need and it's what, it's what our kids need. So I'm, I'm looking forward to voting on that as well. I'm, I do want to bring up an issue. I, I was at a, on vacation last meeting up in Maine. My mom's from Maine and my biological father's from Maine. And we had an opportunity to go up there and spend the first week of school up there. And we had a great time. And I missed the school board meeting on the Tuesday night that was there. And, but I watched it. I sat there at the restaurant table. We went to a authentic Mexican restaurant up there. It was hard to find one, but we did. And I'm sat there and watched the school board meeting. And I'm, and I felt like after watching that school board meeting, that I needed to address some things that, to the public that they may not understand the reason why I ask questions or the reason why I bring things up. But as I sat there that night and I listened to the chairman kind of throw digs at me of not knowing things that I should know, it kind of bothered me because I'm, my time on this board and from January hasn't been the most welcoming position as a school board member. And Ms. Reed actually gave me a great advice when I first got voted in in November. And she said, Matt, why don't you reach out to all the school board members and invite them out to lunch, or at least reach out to them and, and, and talk with them? And so I took Mrs. Reed's advice. And I reached out to all the school board members and only one of them responded back to me. And I, I went down and I met with that school board member and I probably should have left in two minutes after being in that meeting, but I stayed. I'm, and I also reached out to Ms. Lor when we had a joint session with MTC. So we have a joint session with the city school board members. And back in December, we had a session with them to overlook the finances and things like that. And I, so I reached out to another, to, to her, even though I wasn't elected, and just was wanting some help of wanting what, what to expect, things to know, things like that. She responded for me for a little bit, but then she cut all communication off with me and never would respond one, just anything back to me. And so I showed up to that meeting not having, not knowing what to expect, you know, not knowing, wanting to know, wanting to, to have an idea of what was going on. And I didn't know. And so I came on the board. I've, I've been threatened by physical altercation in closed sessions. My first closed session, I was threatened with a physical altercation. And this is something you guys don't know about, what you, what you see. And I don't like to air the dirty laundry out, but as I continually get the digs from the chairman of why I do things or, or the reason why I don't know how to do some things is because how would, how would you feel coming on as a school, new school board member that you've never done this before, but you don't have any help to know some of the things that I actually do? And so that's been my experience in being on here. I was also, there were also things said about me to, to elementary principals after the election, things that wasn't nice about me. I was also called reference Q, as in QAnon, which I had no idea that was what that was about. Some right wing conspiracy theorist people who I'm not associated with whatsoever. And so my, my, my position on this board has been a tough position the last couple of months, this last year. But I'm not, as I told them before, I'm not going to be bullied off this school board and I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. And so I'm, I'll, I'll continue to stand. And if some reasons are sometimes that I don't get things right, it might be because I just haven't had any help to kind of help a little bit. But I'm, I'm not stupid. I can figure these things out. It doesn't take, you don't have to have your master's degree to be a school board member. And I'm, I can do this job and I can do it well. And I can work with other school board members and with the superintendent. You know, I've had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent a couple of times, and we've had some great conversations. And so to me to bring that up tonight, I'm saying to you, Mr. Dr. Scheichel, we've, we've had these conversations. We've talked about some of these things with, with disagreements that we've had. And I think we've gotten over that and I appreciate that because you have been the one out of all these that are here to at least meet with me, talk with me, things like that. And I do appreciate that. And I, and I take, I'm, I thank you for that. It really, it really means a lot to me that you've done that. So, Mr. Chairman, when you, when you say those things about me when I'm on vacation and I don't have an opportunity to, to take up or respond to what you're saying, if you'd stop throwing those digs out at me, I'll stop doing this. And so I'm, that's all I'm asking. I know how to work on a board. I know how to work with people. And all I'm asking is that we do our best job for the employees of Rockingham County Public Schools and most importantly, for the children that are in our schools. And that's what I want. And I'll finish, I'll finish with this, just for, just another example, is the fact that when the parent at the last school board meeting I was at that was cussed by another school board member, was asking for a simple apology as a chairman, it just would have been easy to say, you know what, we apologize for the behavior that, that happened, what was said to you. And instead, you told the parent, if the shoe fits, then wear it. And I'm, I got up, I should have left right when you said that because if, if you're going to disrespect parents, I'm not going to be a part of that. And I should have gotten up right then and walked out. And I stayed and I regret the fact that I did. But I did eventually end up getting up, but I didn't get up fast enough. But I'm, if we can work together, man, I'm, I'm willing to work together with you. As I've told you in the past, I don't want to make enemies with you. And I want to do what's best for the RCPS. So if we can get past the, the public digs and things said in public, then I'm willing to get past that. And to work together. Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin with that one. That is so off the mark, but my turn will come and I will address. Yes, it is. It's off the mark. We have found, I personally have found Mr. Cross to be untrustworthy. You cannot tell him information that, that will not be recounted incorrectly through social media, but we're going to address some of that here in a bit. Ms. Lor?
Thank you. So back to the school buses. Can we go back to school buses? So I think what you're saying is that we've come a long way from where we started. And we are moving forward with additional cameras on the school buses. But we've come a long way, but we've still got a lot of work to do.
So some of our older buses, you can't simply fit out outfit with the cameras that we put on the new ones. So new buses are, have these installed. I think the next conversation is simply whether the school board would want to move forward with, again, exploring and outside a company, for example, because then the installation costs, I believe, Because then the installation costs, I believe with the, the vendor that this board worked with, Redflex, I think they were going to install the cameras, and then they would handle all the, the tickets. Again, there are some conversations around whether really every one of those tickets is that really, are we comfortable with that? Or are we really want a process where it would involve our bus drivers going to court in the cases where there's actually an element of danger to the students on the bus, right? Because as I said, you know, for, sometimes they come out, and it's at that last second, and in an instance where there's no student who would ever really be in that area. But that's a conversation I think we can have. And if the board so desires, then we can certainly reach out to the Board of Supervisors for potential change in the county ordinance to reflect what state law says on that topic.
So is that something that you would reach out or that we'd reach out to the board member?
I think that'd be more of a sense of, I, I can ask Jeremy Mason to maybe look at what vendors are out there. There are now a number of school divisions that do that. And then maybe just, again, bring that approach to the board just for information. And I think that would give then the board an opportunity to weigh in whether there is that desire, rather than here, you know, just making that decision at this point. I think it'd be better to have a little bit of a better sense of how that would then work. And, and maybe, again, just get information from a couple of vendors so that the board understands what that approach would look like, and that we can then also have that conversation. Again, if, you know, if the county Board of Supervisors or law enforcement, you know, do not want to follow a process like that, I think that's got to be part of the conversation. But again, that's for the board to decide. And I think it'd be better for Jeremy to, you know, just present some options so that that starts the conversation.
So can we, as a group, kind of straw, the straw poll and say, please go ahead and, and move forward with gathering information, like we did with the cellphone?
It'll just, yeah, I can, I mean, that's, I think it's a valuable information item, right, the board can then do with that information as the board pleases.
Good. And then also, Linville Edom, how are we moving forward? They're back in school, and they're there. So there's that. But where are we at with, with the situation there?
Yep. Still a lot of work going on with the state in terms of approving final designs for the system. We expect that that would become functional either later this school year or at the beginning of the next school year. So in the meantime, we're going to continue as is. But the, again, that design work, again, those final designs then have to be approved at the state level, and so we're waiting for that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Thank you. Dr. Shaiqo?
Yeah, just briefly, an update for the question that Mr. Cross had asked. So early childhood special education, the four schools where that is, where there's no program, because again, that's served by other schools, would be Folks Run, Audubon, Linville Edom, so this, you know, the, the smaller schools, and Elton Elementary School. Yes, so we have it in, there's sort of 11 programs. And then those four don't have one. But again, those students, but the students are still served, right? So it's just not in their building. Yep. Yep. Linville Edom. You're welcome.
We have had some speakers at some meetings talk about school board social media posts and posts made by school board members and whether they are professional or not. And in my role as chair, I have received multiple complaints on more than one school board member who people feel that social media posts have been inappropriate. With that in mind, I've been thinking about it. And I have that I would like to share with the four of you tonight, and I'll share with Dr. McQuilkin. And it's adapted from another school's guideline, another school board, a school system called School Board Guidelines for Social Media Use. I would not propose this to you all as a policy. I would simply ask that you look at it and see if it's something that we all five would be comfortable signing on to as a pledge to ourselves and our communities in terms of the way that we will conduct ourselves on social media. And we can bring it up at some point later. As I said, it's not a, it, it's not going to be a policy or something that requires a vote. But if I may, I'd like to share with you for your information tonight, that adapted pledge. And feel free to, feel free to look at it, read it, make suggestions or corrections. And hopefully, hopefully, contrary to what took place tonight, for which I'm partly responsible, we can, we can get the dialogue back to a civil place. And, and we can conduct the people's business without being personal. And by being professional, but that requires effort on everybody's part. As I spoke to the, to the gentleman after the meeting who spoke about social media posts, I said, you know, it really, it really has to work with everybody. Yeah, maybe it's true that we need to be held to a higher standard, but everybody needs to hold themselves to a higher standard and, and not make personal attacks and not make threats. And, and I, they're not unique to one side of the, of the discussion, folks. I mean, contrary to what some would have us believe, it's, it's, it's coming from both sides. And at some point, we've got to bring that back more to a, to a center location. So if you all will take an opportunity sometime over the next couple of weeks to, to read this, to share it, to share your thoughts with me on it, I'll be happy to, to, to move it forward if it be something that you all feel interested in. If anyone here would like to see what I've handed out, I'll be happy to share it with you this evening. I only have one copy left, but I'll be happy to share it. So with that, we do have reason to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion in that regard.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. All those in favor of entering into closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 4-0, and we are in closed meeting. Again, thank you all for coming. Have a blessed week and be safe going home. Do you, can I give her your copy?
She could take a picture with her.